All right, good evening, everybody. I am Adam Cullers, I'm the chairman of tonight's meeting, and I will call this meeting to order and declare it the illegally constituted meeting of the Towns of Chillicoee zoning Board of Appeals. If everyone could please rise for the question of allegiance. Fledge of allegiance.
To the flag and the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'm gonna start from my far right, is Jim Weisner. My immediate right is Mark Mary, my immediate left Fred Trump. Far left is Bill Supertall. Side table, we have Paul Onsri from the Building Department, and Matthew Piston, our Assistant Town Counsel. Sandy Hewlett is our stenographer. And just want to note to everyone that you will hear the applications in the order as they appear on the agenda. If you don't want one, it's on the roller cart back of the room by the entrance. And at the conclusion of each public hearing, the board will discuss and vote on the application, and you will receive a letter within a week of our decision. Do have to point out in the event of an emergency, we have exits from the entrance that most likely entered. The back doors and also side doors are all exits. And if you do have a cellphone or pager, it's still in my notes, I don't know if anyone has those anymore, please silence them just to prevent any interruptions. All right. Any issues from the board members on signs?
Yes.
Number two?
No. Two clubhouse?
Yeah, the two clubhouse.
215 Humphrey, I didn't see one.
I got a picture of it, let me check.
Well, I saw an Humphrey. You did, okay.
I didn't see one in clubhouse drive either.
I looked at the side table, all the signs were distributed, correct?
Yes.
All right. Counsel, you saying any issues that we should not proceed?
Yes, yeah, we can hear.
So the ones we have to question is application number two, Robert Mason, two clubhouse drive. Yes, sir, so he's here. What was the other one?
That was it.
I think you can proceed and ask questions on whether the sign was posted or not.
Okay. All right, so with that, we'll move on to application number one, the application of Ray and Lillian Reyes, 28 Jensen Drive, Rochester, New York, 1464. For the owner, for a variance direct in addition to a home seven feet from the side yard setback where ten feet is allowed at the property located at 28 Jensen Drive in the R-1-12 district. You could please come to the podium, identify yourself with your name and address, and that will go to each of the applications. It's your turn to come up. And if you have anything else to add about your application, we can start going. So Reyes? All right, well, we will bring them to the back of the agenda and give them time to possibly attend. So we'll move on to application number two, the application of Robert Mason, two clubhouse drive Churchill, New York, 14428. Owner for variance direct and accessory structure, shed two feet from the principal structure where eight feet is required at the property located at two clubhouse drive in the PRD district. Yes, sir?
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
Yeah, just, we're here tonight, my wife and I, requesting a variance at our property to install a 10-foot by 12-foot shed on the side of our residence. Due to the severe sloping of our property, we really have no other place to put it. Excuse me, replacement of the shed will not affect the landscape of the neighborhood. And it will not be blocking any doors, windows, or emergency exits. You see from the site map, it's a corner lot, there's really, other than that spot, due to the severe sloping, there's really no other place to put it.
I'll still continue this stuff down my lap, so Phil, please.
So the absence of a sign does not preclude our consideration of the application? Side table?
Get past the sign, Phil.
Pardon me?
Get past the sign.
Okay. No questions?
So I think, piggybacking on that, to the applicant, where did you post the sign?
We posted a sign on the side yard, it was a day late, and then we noticed it had blown away because of the wind, and we put it around the front, and two days later, it was gone again because of the wind.
For the board, the code states that failure to maintain the sign shall not prejudice the application.
Thank you.
I had a question to the side table. Does he have to get a variance for a shed in the front yard because he's got the side road there?
He's depicting it to be behind the front plane of the buildings.
Right.
Plane on that second one, so it's not actually in the front yard. Because it's not, it would have to be closer to Prestwick Lane, closer to the road than that side of the house.
Oh, okay. So long as he maintains the plane of the shed in, with, parallel or in conjunction with the plane of the garage, he's not in violation of the code.
Okay. That was the only question. Is that a condition that we'll put on?
Well, he would have to come in for another variance. He's got a dimension listed here from the right-of-way boundary, he has 36.9 feet. If his shed was closer than 36.9 feet, or broke the plane closer to Prestwick Lane, he would have to come back for another variance.
Thanks, Adam.
And Paul would do his great job of inspection and total enforcement.
No doubt.
Well, it looks like you tried to tuck it in that...
Yeah, right behind the third garage there. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and it's important to remember that this is a length is a unique subdivision in the town. Originally, it was going to be townhomes on the golf course. The golf course idea was abandoned, and then they came in for an incentive zone to have very small lots with these houses. So we did know that was gonna happen when the change came from the townhouse, which was one big parcel with splits on the property boundary faced on the townhouse dimensions, and then it became a new subdivision with these, so. All set for?
Yes.
Mark?
I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Jim?
A couple things. So on the, on the application, you said there's been no other zoning variances. I believe this house was one that came in for the setback on the front of the house, I think it was a...
Oh, that was before we moved in. I believe they, house was supposed to setback four more feet, and they didn't do that when they built it. But that was before we were even in the house.
Okay, so it's probably the builder right there. The other question, so this is 10 by 12?
Yes, it is.
So the question about the side setback, if it's 10 by 12, and they're two feet off each one of those, even if they put the 10-foot side, they're two feet off the garage?
They have to be past the plane of the house, correct?
So they would be over?
Correct. And have, they have to come back to us for another variance.
Why would we send them back if we can, we can't handle it tonight?
We can't handle it tonight because it wasn't publicly noticed for that.
So we could table it so he doesn't have to pay again?
Agreed. Or he could go with a smaller shed that is not 10 by 12. Could do an 8 by 14 and make it fit. Just an idea.
Okay, so I will let you sort that one out.
We will continue. I'll pull it or explain to you, but if you're going to do the side shed that you're saying, according to your plan, because your dimension shows that your garage is extending 10 feet in that little corner that you have there?
Yes, sir.
And you just stated that you want a 10 by 12 shed.
Yes.
If you're gonna separate it 10, or two feet from each of the walls, you can't make that happen.
I got you.
You would be closer to Prestwick Lane, which would mean you need another variance because you would be encroaching on the front setback to Prestwick Lane. We can't hear that tonight because that part wasn't part of your application, so the public was not properly noticed to say that that was coming in.
I was not aware of that at all, sir.
So, but once again, it's not set in stone on the application, you're just asking for a structure to be two feet from the principal structure. So that could still be accomplished tonight by changing the size of the shed. The example I gave is an eight-foot, one dimension being eight feet, so that it would fit, and then it would be a longer shed instead of a 10 by 12. That is just one idea. The other idea that was just floated out is, we could table it tonight, that would give time to amend this variance request, add that one in, and then you would attend next month's meeting, and that would give us enough time to put the revised sign out there, just like you just did a sign, and then come back. You wouldn't have to do another application thing, you would just amend this one, so.
Okay, yeah.
Those are your two options, which way would you prefer?
Yeah, we'd amend it, would probably be the best thing for us, yeah.
So with that said, I'm not even gonna do the public hearing tonight, we'll do that again next meeting, and we'll do secret the next meeting, so I will ask for a motion to table this at the applicant's request.
So he's also gonna need a state variance, is it three feet?
That's off the lot lines, that's off the side setbacks.
It's not from the building?
Correct, I don't believe, the state, we would not need a state variance, there's not a state requirement for separation from the principal structure.
No.
It's not like the, where we have a 10-foot side setback, and then somebody wants it closer than three feet, and we require a state variance for a shed that wants to be closer than three feet, that's from the side and rear setbacks.
Okay. As I swear, we've had, maybe the zoning's changed, but...
It has.
Done that before.
It's the building code that's changed.
Yep.
Okay, it used to be, Jim, that you, there was a separation requirement between an accessory structure and the primary structure. That's no longer, from a state code version, that's no longer the, what we're looking at. We look at our code, which is basically eight feet from principal to accessory.
Our examples before, Jim, were the, a lot of them are the pool structures that were pool houses trying to be closer to their ground pools that were approaching.
Yeah, but that was right on the building.
Yep. All right, so I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You have a second, all those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay, so this is the table that we, at applicant's request, please work with Paul and Building Department, we'll get that re-noticed for that amendment on there, and, and once again, if you're gonna keep maintaining the 10 by 12, it's still open to you if you don't want to, you go with a different option.
All right, great, I appreciate it. See you next month. Thank you.
You're welcome, have a good night. All right, so application number three, the application of Daniel Mayer, 140 Fenton Road, Rochester, New York, 1464. Owner for an approval to amend the variance granted on 7/21/2021, and 1,440 square foot accessory structure to add a proposed 816 square feet for a proposed total of 2,256 square feet at the property located at 150 Fenton Road in the R-1-12 district. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Dan Mayer, 140 Fenton Road. Here to amend my variance that was granted back in July. The original variance didn't include a lean-to that's off the back of the building, and a loft that's inside, so that's where the extra square footage comes from.
And the lean-to is 48 feet by 6 feet?
It's, I believe it's 12 feet by 48.
Okay, 12 feet by 44 feet.
Runs the length of the building on the backside, facing the woods, away from the road.
Yeah, I couldn't read that right here. Now, it shows it on the site plan, but it's 12 feet by 44 feet, lean-to, and then the loft would be the other dimension that is adding to that. Once again, that's 40 feet by 6 feet for the loft.
The loft is actually 16 by 36.
Okay. I don't see that called out anywhere, but that's part of that total of the floor.
Yeah, the total comes from the loft and the lean-to.
Gotcha. Okay. Phil, questions?
Not at this point.
Fred?
It says lot two, are these subdivided, the two properties? Or is it just...
There are two parcels. My house sits on five acres, and then I have an adjacent 23 acres. I'm not sure what you're referring to as lot one or two.
That's correct.
That is correct.
So is this lot one or this is lot two? The house on lot one?
Do you mind if I take a look?
Yeah, house sits on lot two. The barn sits on...
Five acres.
Hold on, sits on lot two. Lot one runs behind it, runs between, in a north-south direction, from Chillicoee all the way to Fenton.
Those are on the same lot.
Oh, these two are on the same lot?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
What you're not seeing is this property down here, is Paul is saying, is that's all our one, but what we're looking at tonight is the barn on lot R-2, which also has the two-story frame principal structure.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't need the applicant to come in for, if this was one lot here.
Oh, no. I got you. Yeah, for side setbacks and things like that, that's the property, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we're having, hold on.
We're having a structure on a property without a principal residential structure. Yep, nope, we don't have that scenario.
I don't have any other questions.
No, I'm good, thanks, Adam.
You're welcome. Jim? No. All right. Side table?
No.
All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Hands are interested, ask for motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? With this, you, I will put one condition of approval, that you'll have to get a building permit with the Building Department, which we've already started that process, and we just sent you here, so just continue working with Paul on that. And, once again, this is revising the previously granted variance, so once again, Matthew, the old variance goes away and gets replaced with this one, correct?
Yes, isn't it?
Just wanted to make... Yes, it's an amendment, so.
If it passes, amended variance comes in and the old one is gone. Okay? All right, so with that said, I will declare the zoning board as lead agency and basement information, and that's presented at this hearing. Find this application to be in on unless the action of no significant environmental impact, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? I'd ask for a motion to adopt this application with that one condition of approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Board vote. Boy, this really goes back. Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so you're outside of that.
All right, thank you very much.
Please continue to work with Paul on anything else you need as you do this.
Appreciate it, good night.
Good night. Application number four, the application of Tim Smith, 215 Humphrey Road, Scottsville, New York, 14546. The owner for variance direct an accessory structure, A, 40 feet from the front yard setback where 100 feet is required, B, an accessory structure, B, 1,944 square feet or 792 square feet existing, and 1,152 square feet are proposed, where 1,200 square feet is allowed at the property located at 215 Humphrey Road in the RA-1, comma, FPO district.
Good evening, I'm Tim Smith, applying for a variance to direct a barn on my property. The one thing was, I must have been confused when I was talking to Paul. I thought he was talking about the neighbor's property when I said 40 feet. The setback from the road is actually 136 feet, it should be on the bottom of that one application paper, I corrected it.
I'm seeing, I'm gonna go off your sketch, which is your survey map?
Yeah.
From Gregory, what, Balassey? That showing a driveway in that structure, you're saying that, that 40 feet...
Is to my neighbor to the, to the, to the north, I guess that would be? That's what I was asking.
I'm asking, it's referencing it to Humphrey Road.
Oh.
That's what we're looking at tonight.
Okay, I guess I drew it out wrong, I, because my neighbor Adam's right next to me, and I'm 40, the structure is 42 feet and 39 feet, it's kinda set at an angle, but I measured from the front post to actual Humphrey Road, and it's 136 feet. It's, so it's over the 100 that you guys require. I, there was the one mistake that I made when I was talking to Paul on the phone, I apologize.
I, I honestly don't know how that's possible unless it's sitting right next to your house, because your house sits 164.8 feet from Humphrey Road.
Right, the front edge of it?
Yep. So you're saying this barn is not drawn to scale, and it's actually 136 feet?
I'm not an architect, I'm sorry, I apologize for that. But, yeah, where I actually have it in my side yard, which is actually in front of my home, I measured from the post I had in the ground, and it measured out 136 feet to the edge, right to the paved edge of Humphrey Road on the curve there.
Okay, so that went to the paved edge?
Yeah.
You're not referencing this, are you?
Can I?
Sure.
Oh, yeah. I'm seeing 163 there.
Yes, that's right. I lost my copy.
Okay.
I left it at work.
Okay, so it's 163, not 136.
Right, 163 feet to Humphrey Road, and that's, so this is the property of my neighbor, that's what I was referencing when I talked to him on the phone, and I thought that's what he meant. When he said setback, I apologize, I...
No, just, just for clarif, clarification here?
Yes.
You're still showing it in front of your house?
Yes, it is.
Well, according to this dimension here...
I don't know how that can be, because it's in front of my house, and I measured from the front corner.
I'm looking at 164 feet and eight inches, am I correct?
Yes.
Not eight inches.
I must have run it wrong, I, I can re-measure it and do whatever you need me to do, I have, but it's, I measured right straight through the hedge road that's there, out to the road from the corner where the building actually sits.
Well, we're, we'll get the clarification here, but we can't measure it from the edge of the pavement, the right-of-way is actually gonna be more onto your lawn property.
Yeah.
So a 66-foot right-of-way, as it's listed here, is Humphrey Road, so from the center line, it goes 33 feet is the edge of the right-of-way. The pavement probably goes 11, maybe 12 feet if there's a shoulder, so...
So from the middle of the road, I have to measure 33 feet, and then measure from there as a setback?
Yes.
Okay.
So what I'm gonna do is see if I can bring it up on Google Earth real quick, and see if I can do that. In the meantime, we can discuss the square footage questions. Phil, any questions on the square footage?
Let me just check again the numbers, hang on one second. 12 to 19, no questions on square footage?
So you hear an existing shed, I assume, for the 792?
I have a shed out in the backyard, yeah.
Okay, and you plan on keeping that?
Yeah, that's over on the other side of my house, it's...
Okay. So at the center line of the road, the front of this garage appears to be approximately 230 feet. To the center line of the road. 232 feet to the center line of Humphrey Road, and you're saying you're, on your dimensions on this one, you're gonna go 125 feet from your house?
Well, it's, I just measured where the ditch was gonna run from the electric out of the basement of my house to the actual structure.
Okay, and the size of your barn is?
24 foot by 48.
So with that said, there's no way you will, there's no way that you will be greater than 100 feet. Because if you're going 125 feet at that angle, say it's 100 feet there, that leaves you 132, but your structure's 48. So you're gonna be less, but you're greater than 40.
Yes.
So if you moved it closer to your house?
Yes.
You would need the variance.
So the front edge, the front edge of the barn has to be, what, 133 feet from the center of the road?
The, yeah.
So lo, yeah, right, so long as the northeast corner, as he's drawing it in this little diagram, so long as that northeast corner is more than 133 feet, you will not need a variance.
Correct.
Okay?
Correct.
If it's less, then you need the variance.
Okay.
Okay?
Would you wanna table it? I guess?
I, I'd like to table it to know it for sure.
Yes, right. And I'll do proper measurements of everything for you, I apologize.
Because I don't wanna, it puts us in a precarious spot to grant a variance that stays with the land forever, so any property owner 50 years from now, 60 years from now, could put any structure they wanted 40 feet from the front yard setback. We don't necessarily wanna grant that.
I apologize, I should have asked more questions when doing it.
Okay. But while we're here and while he is here, any questions? I asked it once, any questions regarding the square footage? Any issues anyone's seen with the fact we're gonna have a pre-existing shed with a new shed in our FPO, or RA-1, FPO district? So at the applicant's request, to table this one, I'd ask for a motion to table this application tonight?
Motion?
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So this is tabled until next month, and let's get some more concise, clear, accurate mentions on there.
So submit then to the Building Department for you guys?
Yep, yep, work with Paul on this one, and you may or may not need that variance for the front setback.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Can I ask one question, or is it too late?
Go ahead, he's here.
I've just looked it through papers, and I'm reading this one, it says, this picture of existing buildings that will be dismantled from the land?
Yes.
So is that not including the 700?
Right, they'll, the 24 by 48 building, there's two buildings where I work that they wanna get rid of, and I'm disassembling them, transporting to my house and assembling them into one building.
Okay.
That's, yeah, they're actually 11-year-old structures, but, right.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to number five, application of Daniel Sures, 41 Chestnut Drive, Rochester, New York, 1464. Owner for a variance direct to deck five feet from the side yard setback where 10 feet is required at the property located at 41 Chestnut Drive in the R-1-12 district. I said your last name incorrectly, I apologize.
No, you're good, that was right.
Anything to add?
Yeah, so you guys can probably see the last pages of the document. The property lines on my property actually run diagonally, which has led to a lot of variances, most of them way before my time. But there used to be a deck on the side of the house, you can see the former deck in some of the pictures. The variance is to, I understand that the deck is built by the previous owners, it was not up to code, so it was taken down. The hope is to build a smaller deck that will still be five feet from the property line, and we'll sort of beautify that space again.
No questions.
Fred? Fred?
So you said erect a deck five feet from the side yard, I have changed to seven feet proposed?
Oh, you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I want to move on.
No, it's fine. Nope, five feet.
You might be looking at the house, the house is seven feet from the property line, but just below that is.
No, I got two of the same.
Oh, that might be, I printed two of the previous, so I apologize.
Never mind.
All set?
Yeah.
Mark?
All set, thank you.
Jim?
So the previous variance was for the north side of the deck and this one now cleans up, this is for the south side of the deck, that's kind of.
Other way around, Jim.
It's all the way around. So it's one end versus the other.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, you're talking about the variance that, um, I was here for, for the back deck, correct?
Yes, so yeah, that's the south end, so the two and a half was for the south end and then the five foot is for the north end, no?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I got.
And to clarify where your graphic says former deck, just once again, the former deck on the, I don't see why we're there, but, um, the former deck shows it as being point one feet from the property line, that's being replaced with a new deck that's going to be five feet.
Correct.
So we're taking it from point one to five. Side table, anything to add?
Yes.
That, your letter indicates it's the north, okay?
Are you just missing a north there, or the civil engineering is missing a north there? Does this have a homeowners association in this area of it?
No, it's Chestnut Drive.
Okay.
Town Road.
Oh, you know, I'm thinking Chestnut Ridge.
Right.
No, I.
Well, Chestnut.
Subdivision is what I think, right. Too many chestnuts. All right. Uh, one condition of approval will be, uh, your building permit will be necessary, so we've already started that process of continuing working with Paul on that. And I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Still not seeing any interest. Still not seeing any, ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Is there a motion to close, or a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so I will go ahead and declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information evidence presented, this hearing finds this application to be a type two action notice against environmental impact, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
And opposed, I'd ask for a motion to accept this application with that one condition of approval.
Motion.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Board of vote, Jim?
It, so, is the wording going to be from the north property line or?
Uh, I was just going to say. It's to the north.
Right. Because the other one, I fear is to be done from the south property line.
As the application was proposed here, but the, yes, so it's actually going to be five feet from the west property line. Is that accurate, Paul? You're in agreement with that? When north is off, west is left? I have to rotate the page to do that.
I think you're on the north side.
Chestnut Drive runs north and south.
Okay, so it's going to be on the south side?
The other one was on the south side.
It's on the north side.
This is on the north side.
The house faces east.
Okay, that's what I need to know, which way the house faces.
That little tiny accessory driveway is north.
Correct. Wait, find out which one is it?
The garage is on the south side, my final answer.
What's that?
North, my final answer.
All right, north it is. applicant, do you agree?
Agreed.
Okay. All right, so now you ready to vote, Jim?
Yeah, well, you want me to vote? Yes.
Mark?
Wait a minute. Yes.
I haven't even voted. Fred?
Please.
Yes.
Sorry, Alex.
Bill?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
I also vote yes.
Did you seek her?
Yes, the type two action. Yep.
I take into the motion.
All right, you're all set.
You guys.
All right. Application number six, these names, we're going back to the way that.
Or not. Don't go back, you just go forward.
Application.
Bright idea, wasn't it anyways?
I don't know, I liked that when I got here. Application of Kenworth Northeast Group, twenty-five Airline Drive, Rochester, New York, one-four-sixty-four, uh, owner at twenty-five Airline Drive, LLC, one-hundred Commerce Drive, Buffalo, New York, I don't understand any of that. Variance to erect a second wall sign to be sixty square feet where fifty square feet is allowed of the property located at twenty-five Airline Drive in the L-I Light Industrial slash Anatah District. Yes, sir?
Good evening. Kirk Wright, Sign and Lighting Services, five-thirty, Route one-oh-four, Ontario, New York, um, here for Kenworth Northeast, uh, for Dan Patino. Uh, adding a second sign where, this is part of a, a large remodel to the building, they're painting the entire building, adding a couple of parking spaces, uh, just cleaning things up in general, removing a bunch of kind of, uh, un, unhelpful signage that's on the building now and, uh, looking for ten square feet of relief on the second sign.
And once again, this is over on Jet, or Airline Drive.
Airline Drive.
Over to Jet.
That's correct.
No questions?
Uh, no questions.
Fred? Once again, we're talking about the square footage of that second wall sign. Ten square feet higher than what the question was.
That is a six.
Yes, that is a six. Yes.
Yeah, I don't need.
Okay.
All set, thanks, yeah.
Jim?
No, I don't have anything.
Side table, anything to add?
Sure.
All right. I will go ahead and ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
A second, all those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I don't have any conditions for this one. Is that somebody else has one? That said, I'll declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information evidence presented, this hearing finds this application to be an unlisted action notice against environmental impact, is there a second?
Second.
A second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passed, uh, ask for a motion to adopt this application presented?
Motion.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Board of vote, Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I also vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Do I need to file a new application for the permit or?
Call, call, call me tomorrow because I can't remember if that was part of the sign package or not, I believe it was, so.
I agree.
But I'll have to review that, so give me a call tomorrow.
Just keep working with Paul.
Yeah, that's kind of the idea. Uh, you are the Reyes, Jensen Drive, okay.
Okay.
Take it as you want, Mr. Chairman.
We have one more. I'm going to bump that back off, application seven, this is my hero, that, um, I would like to stick this post to me. Agenda order as we can, so, application number one, the application of Ray and Lily and Reyes, twenty-eight Jensen Drive, Rochester, New York, one-four-sixty-four, for grants to erect an addition to the home seventy feet from the side yard setback where ten feet is allowed, at property located at twenty-eight Jensen Drive. Oh, we got mixed up. Do you mean if you can identify yourself with your name and your address and anything else you'd like to add about your application?
Sure, I'm Jacqueline Tewksbury, I'm their daughter, they're out of town and forgot to tell me to come, so, um, but I know a lot because I lived there, uh, I lived on fifty-four Big Street Street in La Bona, former Chilean.
Okay.
Yeah, talk. Jacqueline Tewksbury, I'll spell it, T-E-W, K like kangaroo, S like Sam, B like boy, U like umbrella, R like Roger, Y like yellow. You didn't even look at your, oh, it's impressive. Um, so, the house was built and there was a zoning of seven feet from the house, so when they contacted the architect and made the designs, if they wanted to go flush, they'd actually be at seven, it's a little bit over seven feet, almost eight feet, um, but still, so they just wanted to appeal to make sure that it's all flush, they did post out the sign, excessively large, and did talk to the neighbors, um, a few times about them being okay with it as well, just to make sure, and so, that's.
And it's just in design, it's not built yet?
Not built yet, they dug, I think, maybe, but, that's about it.
Bill, any questions?
No questions.
Fred?
Um, no questions.
Mark?
No questions, Andy, thank you.
Jim?
Nope.
Side table, anything to add? Go ahead and open up the public hearing. Seeing any, ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
The motion is there a second? All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, one condition of approval for this one will be the need for a building permit, so, very applied, but a building permit must be obtained for this one. And I will declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information evidence presented, this hearing finds this application to be a type two action notice against environmental impact, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Ask for a motion to adopt this application with that one condition of approval?
Motion.
The motion is there a second?
Second.
Second. Board of vote, Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I also vote yes. You're all set, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, yes. They were in an order! Wow. Application number seven, sorry, application of Ryan Goodwin, one-three-six-nine, Paul Road, Churchill, New York, one-four-four-two-eight, owner for approval to amend a variance grant to nine feet, twenty-three, two thousand seventeen, total garage area of two thousand one hundred thirty-four square feet to add a proposed one thousand five hundred thirty-six square feet where nine hundred sixty square feet addition, five hundred seventy-six square foot open cover storage for a proposed total of three thousand six hundred seventy square feet of property located at thirteen sixty-nine Paul Road in R-Dash-Bond-Fifteen District. Do you need?
How are we doing today, guys?
How are we doing?
My name's Ryan Goodwin at thirteen sixty-nine Paul Road, um, I have an existing barn that we got a variance for five years ago, um, we're doing addition off the back, which we've already built, um, and then we put an in-ground pool in last year and my wife wants a nice shaded area because it's all sun in the back, so essentially it's going to be about thirty feet of just covered, like a lean-to almost, like twelve foot off the, the existing structure, and then there's going to be a little poolhouse area for pool toys and then to store the pump and heater and whatnot in there. In the back shed, that's in the back corner of the property, after all this is done, that's all getting demolished.
Okay.
So that seven hundred or eight hundred is going to be gone.
Okay. Once again, you own about one point eight acres?
Yep.
Bill, any questions?
Is this, um, you're calling it a lean-to?
The, the one side's a lean-to, the back of the, the back section of the barn is actually all enclosed. So the lean-to is going to be, there's going to be about thirty foot that's going to be lean-to all wide open, and then there's going to be a little cased-in area for the, for pool toys, stuff like that.
This pushed toward the pool?
Pushed towards the pool, correct.
Okay, and how far is it from the pool?
I believe it's five, five or six foot from the pool. I made sure with, um, not with Paul, but the other guy, that it would be okay with the distance on how far it was away from the pool, because I didn't think it could even be as close as it is.
Okay, thank you.
So the enclosed in the back, he's going to construct that.
Yes, so he's got it closed and then the open.
And the open.
So on the open, he's got a small square, twelve by fourteen, that's going to be walled off of the door, that's what's shown on the other plan, and that's where he's going to store the pool toys and things like that.
And the filter and all that fun stuff.
Yep, and then this enclosed is the addition to the existing barn.
It's a lot of garage.
I got a lot of toys, I love four-wheelers, snowmobiles, I got kids, side by side.
And he's got one point eight acres.
Yeah.
And it all sits behind the house.
Yeah, you can't see it. Yeah, no one, I mean, I've got my two neighbors here that can actually see it and.
Yeah, we'll speak with them at public hearing time. Once again, this is Paul Road at Dead End.
Yeah, back right up to the woods, four ninety there, so.
All set?
All set.
Mark?
All set, thanks, Jim.
Side table, anything to add? Go ahead and open up the public hearing. Just for the record, if you could just state your name and your address and if you're in support or opposition of it, it's great for us to have that out in the record.
Bill Katie, one-three-seven-three, Paul Road, and I'm completely fine with it.
Thank you. We don't want to know that.
Alan Robinson, thirteen-seven-one, Paul Road, and I'm completely fine with it.
Okay, thank you. Ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion is there a second? All right, so, all those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Public hearing closed. Uh, one condition of approval, you'll have to get a building permit. Well, that part we're just going to mark down. Condition?
He has to get a building permit for the existing thirty by thirty off the existing?
Yep.
Okay, you, just so you clarify that.
Sorry, sorry, could I do it on the same one or would it be?
You can, yeah, you can, you can put on the same permit, but you have to include that area, that square footage, and we've got to inspect that.
Okay.
Okay?
So I'll mark that down with a building permit, it will need to be, uh, obtained for the existing structure and the proposed.
Yep.
All right, so I will declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information evidence presented, this hearing finds this application to be a type two action notice against environmental impact, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Now I'd ask for a motion to adopt this application with that one condition of approval?
So moved.
The motion is there a second?
Second.
Board of vote, Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so you're all set with that?
Thank you, guys.
Enjoy, and you're only limited to those neighbors being able to store their toys.
And go swimming.
Only they get to swim, right?
Have a good night.
You too.
All right, so now we'll move on to the minutes, so we would have had the April twenty-fifth and the March twenty-eighth minutes, everybody received those in your comments?
Sent you an email on one of those.
I never, I don't remember.
Never saw it.
I never saw it.
I'm never going to send you an email again.
Okay, what was your, what was your email about?
Uh, yeah, okay, let me see if I can find it, Sandy will send it to you, otherwise I approve, yes.
Okay.
Were you changing, changing the misspellings or?
Yeah, why do you change it?
It was building manager and prerogative, I think I saw spelt wrong, I wasn't going to pick on Sandy, but.
Well, you just did.
Well, you just did.
I don't worry about spelling it.
I would never pick on Sandy.
All right, so going for those?
Jim? Yeah.
Ask for a motion to accept and approve those minutes. Was your comment substantial for the revision and which one was it, April or March?
I believe it was March.
Okay.
I think it was in reference to Mr. Dunning. Does it ring a bell now?
Yeah. Not at all.
I'm going to let it ride.
Okay. Counsel, do you have to do it?
Probably shouldn't have said that about him.
I think it was...
If there's a revision to be made, it can't be made after.
Right.
Yeah, so...
Okay.
So, do you want the...
You want her to read that back for you? I think it's toward the end of the minutes.
I think it's toward the end of the minutes. You are...
Very, I'm reading the last page.
Very good, Mr. Weisner.
Okay, so is this the one you sent on April 26th? Having misunderstood what Jim Weisner stated for the...
Yes.
My remark is not relevant to follow. Can that be stricken from the record?
Very good.
Well, you still said it.
Yeah.
I don't think I did.
Yeah, you can't just strike something from the record.
Well, former presidents do. He's also in court. Oh, okay.
I got a Sharpie you can borrow.
Thank you.
That check for that lady. Strike that from the record.
But it's not the record until it's approved.
No, but because it's a transcript, not a summary of it.
Okay.
Even if you've said and it's irrelevant to the topic we're talking about, you just leave it in.
Okay.
It just stays irrelevant.
All right.
Am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
It'd be different if she was writing, if we were writing meeting notes or minutes that were summarizing things and they weren't transcribed direct quotes. That's a different story.
Okay.
But these ones are transcribed, so...
Okay.
I say we leave, so I'll ask for a motion to accept and approve the minutes from March and April.
Motion.
The motion is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so those are done.
So, this whole conversation was also...
Correct.
I tried to stop it, but you just kept going and going.
I'm fine with it. All right, now I will make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'm impressed by you looking.
We have a second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.